We're ready when you are, Vice Chair Plummer.
All right. I call the order this meeting of September 25th, regular planning commission meeting at 6:32. Welcome, everybody. Shall we start with the pledge of allegiance? Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May I please get a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Marilyn Avalon?
Here.
Commissioner Eric Altman?
Present.
Commissioner Shelby Goss?
Present.
Vice Chair Charles Plummer?
And I am present.
And Chair Devett Muhammad is absent.
Do we have any changes to the agenda tonight?
Vice Chair Plummer, there are no changes to the agenda tonight.
Perfect. Thank you. Shall we start with any public or presentations? Public comment? Presentations?
Vice Chair Plummer, we have no presentations tonight.
Wonderful. Do we have any public comments, which at this time is reserved for members of the public to address the planning commission on items that are not on the agenda and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission? Comments are limited to three minutes. Comments for items on the agenda will be taken when the item is called in open session. Planning commission is prohibited by law for taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda and not adverse. Conclusion should be drawn if the planning commission does not respond to the public comment at the time.
Is there anyone in the room that would like to make public comment? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to make public comment? There's no public comment at this time.
Thank you very much. I think we'll start with item number one, the consent calendar, the minutes of August 28th, 2025. Have a recommendation?
I'll move that we adopt the consent calendar.
I will second that.
Thank you. May I get a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Marilyn Avalon?
Aye.
Commissioner Eric Altman?
Aye.
Commissioner Shelby Goss?
Aye.
Vice Chair Charles Plummer?
Aye.
Moving on to item number two, public hearings for the Crawford Way multifamily condominium tentative subdivision map. Looks like our recommendation is to defer this to the November planning commission meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct, Vice Chair Plummer and members of the commission. The applicant would like a little more time to work with staff on conditions of approval.
Do we have a motion to continue this at the next meeting?
I'd like to make a motion to continue the Crawford Way multifamily condominium tentative subdivision map to November 20th, 2025.
I will second that motion.
May I get a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Marilyn Avalon?
Aye.
Commissioner Eric Altman?
Aye.
Commissioner Shelby Goss?
Aye.
Vice Chair Charles Plummer?
Aye.
At this time, I need to backtrack just a second to close public comment. I apologize. I didn't do that. Moving on to business, item number three, the Napa Valley Transportation Authority, active transportation plan overview.
Commissioner, this is Patrick Band. We're very pleased he is here tonight from the Napa Valley Transportation Authority. The Napa Valley Transportation Authority in past years has prepared a countywide bicycle plan and a pedestrian plan and done so in a manner where there's countywide consistency and then individual policies for each of the jurisdictions in Napa County. It's a wonderful service and we've adopted them into our general plan as appendix. And so this is an update for you to find out where we are. And at some point early in 2026, we'll be bringing it back to you as a recommendation to amend our general plan to update both the bicycle and pedestrian plan into this combined active transportation plan. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Band and he can run you through.
Thank you very much.
So again, Patrick Band with NVTA, the Napa Valley Transportation Authority. And before I get into the presentation, because I know some members may not be super familiar with what NVTA is and what we do. So we are a countywide joint powers authority, or JPA, that has representatives from each jurisdiction on our board. And we run, in addition to the Vine Transit System throughout the county, we also do advanced transportation planning, both in coordination with MTC, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, and also in coordination with our local jurisdictions. We do project deliveries such as the Sausal Junctions, Roundabouts, and Oak Pass on 29 and 21. We have in the past helped deliver segments of the Napa Valley Vine Trail and are currently working with City of American Canyon on a couple of projects, including the SR29 corridor plan, which is looking at intersection improvements and other active transportation multimodal improvements along SR29 through the City of American Canyon. So we have our hands in a lot of different projects related to both this city and other jurisdictions throughout the county, including active transportation. And that is the work that I do for NVTA. So this is an update on our progress, as Director Cooper mentioned, to the countywide active transportation plan, which brings together a 2016 document, the countywide pedestrian plan, and a 2019 document, the countywide bicycle plan, into an updated single document that can guide active transportation investments and planning and policy work for the next 20 years. So I'll go over today a little bit of why we do a countywide plan, where we are, the timeline, and the project status, some of the community engagement that we've done thus far, the plan organization, how we're structuring the document, what some of the goals are, and really the meat and potatoes of the document, the draft facilities and policies. And then we'll get into the next steps in terms of both this commission's engagement and the plan overall. So why do we do a countywide plan? Again, as Director Cooper mentioned, we want to make sure that there's consistency across jurisdictions in how active transportation programming and project delivery is conducted in a way that's both consistent across the county, but also allows for local discretion and addressing the unique needs of each jurisdiction. We want to make sure that we're planning facilities that represent the best practices that currently exist, not the ones from 2016, because there are going to be a lot of changes, both at the state law level, but also federally in terms of best practices or guidance, whether it comes to daylighting with new bills that were passed in the state of California in the last year, new types of bike facilities like class four separated protected bikeways, the ability to use share roads to designate different types of bike facilities. We also want to make sure that projects are still eligible for funding. That's a big part of this planning effort, making sure that we're identifying where future projects might go so that they're eligible for either competitive or programmatic funding that comes from federal, state, or regional entities like the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, or the City of American Canyon can apply for through grant processes. And we also want to make sure we're being really transparent with the public and the community about what our expectations are for the future network of active transportation. Where are these corridors going to be? What might they look like? Who are they designed for? Whether it's the more aggressive kind of recreational cyclist, maybe going out and doing an eighty mile bike ride, or kids and families who want to walk up to school or down to the coffee shop or the grocery store, et cetera. So a lot of different things go into this planning process. We kicked off this plan last fall, and been working with our lead consultant, GHD, for the last year. Right now, we're in that recommendations development phase, where we've done a lot of community outreach and engagement, collected existing conditions, data, looking at where are the existing bike facilities, where are the existing sidewalks countywide, including American Canyon. And we're getting ready to release draft facility maps and draft policies for public review, which will be available in the next couple of days, actually. And we hope to complete this plan towards the end of the year, January. That will go and be adopted by the NVTA Board of Directors and then go to each jurisdiction for evaluation, possible amendments, adoption. So there's a lot of pieces that I've already had to discuss that go into this process. As I said, we've completed mapping and existing assessments. We've also developed a treatment toolkit, kind of again, the best practices guide for jurisdictions, as well as the public, to understand what is our menu of options when it comes to what can we do on the roadways to make them safer, make them better connected, reduce the potential for collisions, and even separate different types of active transportation modes, making sure that if you do have a hard, large number of fast-moving bicyclists, maybe separating them from pedestrians or kids and families that are walking at a lower pace, that they need a little bit of horizontal separation on a class one's pathway. And then coming up, we're doing a final round of engagement. We'll do a future demand assessment. What is this plan going to look like? And how does it align with how we expect our cities to grow in the next 20 to 30 years? And then come up with a draft. Lots of work going on. We've done open house events in Napa at Napa Valley College this last February. We did a CalStoga event in April. We've done a number of pop-up events, including at Easton Street here in American Canyon, as well as at a number of school events. We did a career fair event in American Canyon, American Middle School, which was really fun, talking to kids about, you know, how far do you feel comfortable walking on a sidewalk versus along Highway 29 where there aren't sidewalks the whole way, versus on a separated pathway that might have trees and lighting and be really conducive to safe, connected travel. And that kind of feedback really informs the types of facilities that we want to recommend in this plan. We've had online engagement through an interactive map, which you can see on the screen there, with people putting pins on maps to identify locations where they had either a question that they wanted to ask or a recommendation they wanted to make. And we had a survey that went out this past June that had nearly 200 responses, asking people again about what do they want to get out of the active transportation network? Do they use walking and biking as a mode of transportation currently? You know, if they're a transit rider, do they have challenges getting from the bus or getting to the bus to the destination that they want to get to? We've developed a vision statement for this plan. Really worried, so I'm just going to highlight a couple of things here. So active transportation friendly communities, connected, comfortable, all ages and abilities. In that term, all ages and abilities is really central to the network that we want to develop over the next 20 years. We want to have it be safe, convenient, and enjoyable to access for everybody, whether you're commuting, it's a non-work trip, it's a recreational trip, and all of that to promote a high quality of life in the Napa Valley. So the plan itself is going to be divided into chapters, and each jurisdiction will have an individual chapter that's focused just on that. And so that's when we get back to, again, that countywide consistency, but local discretion and local guidance. We're working very closely with the Community Development Department and Public Works to both shape recommendations and guidance and policies to make sure that they really reflect the spirit of what American Canyon is all about. And that can be a little bit different than the City of Napa or CalStoga. We'll have a set of policies at the countywide level and then have room for local jurisdictions and cities to create their own policies that support local priorities that may be a little bit different or have different emphasis from the countywide set of policies. And you can see that happening, for example, in the way that, let's say, daylighting is implemented. So daylighting is moving cars back from the corners of those intersections so that there's room for pedestrians to be visible, and there's even room to kind of narrow down that intersection so that pedestrians are crossing a crosswalk, that they're more visible to vehicles, they have a shorter distance where they're in the roadway. So the daylighting or curb extensions, things like that, that may be appropriate in some neighborhoods and not others. You know, it may make a lot of sense in more urbanized areas, but you know, in Rutherford or Oakville, where you don't have a lot of population, particularly pedestrians, that may make less sense. So we really want to make sure there's flexibility for each jurisdiction to kind of shape the plan as it makes sense to them. And once we get that piece out of the way, we're also looking at best practices and, again, wanting to focus on those goals, safety, equity, connectivity, sustainability. We also want to make sure that we're building out a network that we can maintain long-term. So looking at how do we ensure that we're setting standards so that we don't just build new pathways and then let them fall into disrepair, but there are programs or policies in place that support ensuring that those facilities, whether they're a bike lane along the side of the street or a separated pathway, continue to be maintained effectively. And then looking at data and evaluation, and this is something we've been really working hard on.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
So my question is a little bit off the beaten path, and for better or worse, it doesn't really directly deal with the active transportation piece that is the focus here, but it's really for my own curiosity and to kind of understand a little bit more as to how NVTA thinks about certain things. So you had mentioned a little bit, without kind of getting into specifics, but commuters and the need to, that it's really that last mile issue, right, is how it's generally referred to. How do you get to the station, whatever the station may be, from home? And one of the crazy ideas that I've heard over the last few years, and I just wanted to see if it's even come up at all as a thought, is sort of the concept of like a public Waymo where you've got these, you know, driverless vehicles that the community owns, so anybody can call it up, can hop in, and can get taken that last mile in the morning and dropped off in the evening. And if they're solar-based vehicles, they can sit in the sun and charge all day long so that they're ready and they can, you know, kind of be an on-call. Has any thoughts of anything crazy like that been discussed and what's the status?
Yeah, so a couple of things on that. One is NVTA does run the transit system throughout the county. We have, in American Canyon, we have both the Big Strout Loop that runs in the mornings and the evenings, you know, to kind of school them. But then during the rest of the day, that is an on-call transit system. And so you can actually go to the NVTA website, vinetransit.org, or call our member, which my brain is not remembering right now, and order up effectively. So that is one example. The other example is the V-Commute Program that NVTA runs, which is a commuter incentive program, which is not directly related to that, but we'll all get to how it is in a second. So this is an incentive program where we provide financial incentives to individuals to take alternative transportation, so anything other than driving alone. So that could be car pools, van pools, it could be transit, it could be walking, biking, scooters, what have you. And a couple of things that relate to that question. One is we just launched a program in partnership with Enterprise, the car rental company, to subsidize a van pool program in Napa County. And so the way that works is NVTA provides $250 every month to eligible van pools throughout through Enterprise that either begin or end in Napa County. So as in American Canyon, you may have employers, whether it's in the airport industrial area or whether it's Wal-Mart or even City Hall, where you might have a critical mass, four, five, six people who live, let's say, in Sassoon or Fairfield or Vacaville, who want to take a bus, effectively a van, in to work. And so we'll provide a $250 subsidy to cover the cost of that van pool, in addition to a $500 subsidy provided already by MTC. So $750 per month for that. Regarding the kind of the Waymo on-demand, you know, autonomous vehicle thing, there've been a lot of ideas thrown around over the last number of years. I can't speak directly to, you know, what NVTA may do in the future, but you know, from our general understanding of kind of where the environment is for those kinds of autonomous on-demand vehicles is that they're not quite there yet in terms of being cost-effective, in terms of being able to make sure that they are meeting the needs of all the residents who may want to use them, given the number of vehicles you might have to have on-call at any moment in time. Or is it not there yet? But they may be, you know, becoming a bit more mainstream in the next 10, 15 years, particularly in larger urbanized downtown areas, whether that's San Francisco or Oakland or, you know, other kind of higher density areas. I'm a little skeptical personally about the potential in more suburban, single-family suburbs, you know, American Canyon-type communities. Those are some examples that kind of address that question.
Thank you. I appreciate, I really appreciate it, because it's just something, it's one of the big issues. I'm a remote employee, so it doesn't impact me, but there are a ton of people who are impacted and end up driving because of that issue of the last mile. It's easier to drive 10 miles and get from here to wherever they need to go than it is to, and more, you know, it's quicker, et cetera, even with traffic, than it is to have to do the one mile to then take transit for the remaining nine. So thank you.
Hey. One, thanks so much for that presentation. It seems like the plan is very clearly well-thought-out and seems very realistic in addressing the needs of Napa County specifically, like you said, being a lot of like suburban areas opposed to dense city centers. I did have a question about the outreach. I know you said there was a survey a couple of months ago and also that interactive map for people to make suggestions or ask questions. I personally saw both of those and contributed to both of them. Yeah, but I also consider myself someone who's relatively aware of planning decisions and transit specifically. I know that public outreach is hard. There seem like relatively low numbers for response rates for being countywide, and I was curious, one, I guess, what the strategies were. And I was curious, one, I guess, what the strategies were to make those resources known to people and what might be planned in the next year or two as things keep moving along to try and get even more engagement.
Sure. Yeah.
No, thank you. I appreciate that. And that makes sense that the individual pieces, there will be outreach for those specific components as well. That makes sense. And I appreciate you mentioning also all of the comments you've received at the events that weren't necessarily captured herein, the numbers. Yeah, I agree that it's local jurisdictions, like it's a joint effort to try and engage people. And, you know, I understand this seems to a lot of people like it might be more niche, like active transportation, what does that mean? I don't ride a bike. What do I care? But in a city like American Canyon, I think the issue of sidewalk connectivity alone is something that will impact everyone. So I hope that we're able to really boost engagement for that. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Avalon, did you have a question?
Hi, Patrick. I wanted to say also thank you for the comprehensive plan and how well you described and explained it all. I wanted to say I really appreciated the part about having safe and effective travel to and fro and how you emphasize the importance of maintenance. Like we build something, we want to make sure that we're continually maintaining it. My question is a little bit simple. It's not as complex. But in the initial packet, I, you know, for the opportunity for grants, I would, it's more of a wonder, have the other cities also adopted? You know, Napa, St. Helena, and Calistoga? Because we're part of that network. I'm wondering, have they also provided their feedback and have they adopted the plan? And then my second question is, how does this really cool plan connect with the Vine Trail?
So, uh...
Thank you, commissioners. Any other questions?
I have a question, by the way. Thank you for the presentation. That was really helpful. And I too have attended a couple of the seminars and find it really fascinating and interesting to see the connectivity that's happening up and down the, up and down the county. Can you help me understand what an example of an unclassified path is?
So I don't have, when I pull the blue map here, is that possible? Should I not try? I can just describe an example instead of...
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
So what we wanted to do was identify...
Well, thank you. That's helpful to understand. It's such a small, especially if you can stay on this slide too. It's such a small number relative to the mileage that's being developed beyond that. My second question for you is, I imagine every jurisdiction is going to, once it's adopted or as it's adopted, decide safety issues for each mile of quarter that's happening down there. What about the unincorporated Napa County, which tends to be and looks to be the largest portion of that? What kind of safety measures are being implemented or thought out for it? Particularly, maybe less so in the daytime, but at nighttime?
Yeah, so...
Thank you for that explanation and thanks for that update. Commissioners, any other questions? Do we have any public comment?
Is there anyone in the room that would like to comment on this item? There's no public comment.
Is there anybody online?
No.
We'll close public comment. Thank you so much for your presentation. Well received. Thank you. Moving on to item number four. American Canyon's R.S.A.P., Regional Shoreline Adoption Plan Overview. Director Cooper.
Good evening. Planning Commission members of the public. Grant Cooper, committed all director. And pleased to give you a little brief introduction for a very important plan that's recently come to the forefront of a lot of the efforts that we'll be undertaking in the next 10 years or so. And it does come with a very large price tag. So what I brought for you, just to give you an introduction, are slides that come directly from the Bay Conservation and Development Commission, B.C.D.C., and give you a little bit of an update. And then, very pleased tonight, we have the Assistant Public Works Director, Norm Woods. And he's going to talk about his efforts to apply for a grant so that we can start getting our arms around some of the adaptation needs associated with climate change and sea level rise. So we've been hearing about sea level rise, for those who have been paying attention, for quite a few years. And now we're going to do something about it. And so it's really something that affects communities all over the world where, and the Bay Area, of course, is no exception. There have been some estimates on what the effects are to adapt to rise in sea level. For those of you who maybe have driven on Highway 37, areas of that now are becoming inundated. And if you're a avid bicyclist, I guess that doesn't deter you. You'll still ride your bike, but who would prefer to do that? The B.C.D.C., of course, has been around, I think, since the 60s. Very, very influential, important in the Bay Area's development. And so this is really in their wheelhouse. And so they have created guidelines now for every community to be working on a plan to adapt to sea level rise. And they have a lot of support, that they're providing the communities with funding and guidance and just a lot of information. So we really appreciate that. State government also is involved. There's a Senate bill that requires sea level adaptation plans. So this is kind of, all kind of working in concert with one another. And so the plans for adapting to sea level rise has been integrated into some of the regional plans for the Bay Area through the Association of Bay Area Governments. So we have our regional governments are talking to one another. And so it's really tied into our other regional agency for the Bay Area. So it's kind of good that they're coordinating here. And so it's part of the One Bay Vision, which is part of the A-Beg. It refers to sea level rise and working on how we transform our lifestyles to adapt to our coastline inundation. We don't like to live near the coast, so there's a lot of conflict there. There are, like I mentioned, there are guidelines. It's a very thick book, a lot of information. And so as you can see here, there's quite a few areas in which the guidelines cover for, to prepare for the adapt, adaptation plan. I'll go through the ball here. But you can see that there's a lot of information that will need to be created in order to get our arms around the effects of sea level rise. Within the plan, it calls for sub-regional plans. And to me, that's sort of piqued, what is a sub-region for a region? Right? Or the Bay Area region? And so we're really kind of dug into that because it affects, do we do it alone? Is that possible? Or do we pair with Napa County? Is it multiple counties? What is it? And so I did find a slide from another B.C.D.C. presentation that answered my question. And the answer, all of the above. So I think what the recognition is, within the Bay Area, you'll probably have natural partners who might pair up. That B.C.D.C. itself doesn't understand who they are. But as the guidelines come out, as you look at where you are on the bay and how much bayfront you have versus maybe other neighbors and partners, there are probably natural partnerships that evolve from that. And so the sub-region can be as small as a single jurisdiction, such as American Canyon. But there is no limitation to perhaps pairing up with a county of Napa, maybe Napa County... maybe Napa County, American Canyon, so on. There isn't a limitation, so I think it's really a matter of each, what circumstance works for each area, and that can define as a subregion. What is necessary, regardless of how many partners or your geographic area, you do have to comply with the guidelines, which is very detailed over the information that's needed. So, our role will be, need to submit a notice of intent to B C D C to let them know what the area, who are our partners, if any, for our subregion. And then, we create the plans, and we have until 2034. So I know that doesn't, that may seem like a lot of time to some people, but it's remarkable how quickly these things happen. And so, it is a big, I think it really recognizes the amount of information, the process to really put this together, not to mention what will likely be a high cost to have technical consultants evaluating this very scientific nature of an issue. So, 2034, and it doesn't mean we can't be early, right? So, I'm not sure what early feels like, but, you know, perhaps we could aim for that. And so, there are a lot of resources B C D C has, and there is funding support. And pretty much with that, I'm going to turn this over to our friend here, Norm Woods, and he can talk about how he has already started to work on a grant application, the first of its nature in Napa County, once again, American Canyon at the forefront. And if you have any questions, we have these very nice people from B C D C who would be glad to answer your questions. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Blitz. Thank you, Brent. I always forget to lift this up, so I'm ducking down, so I don't want Erica laughing at me tonight. Good evening, Norm Woods, Assistant Public Works Director. This is a real brief overview of the O P C Sea Level Rise application that we're putting in right here. So, there's only a couple of slides here. A more in-depth, granular review of this would be significantly like this. Application is 25 pages long, which requires multiple steps and multiple edits, which Brent had within his PowerPoint right there. So all those elements that he showed in the slides earlier, they have to be addressed, and they have to be within a certain timeframe, so. So, the American Canyon S L R Adaptation Plan, the path that we're currently on right now, the application has not been submitted yet. There's a couple of paths that we could have taken. We have, just recently today, had some conversations where we're going to be in a possible collaboration with the county and additionally with the city of Napa. We do have our own application ready, and everything doesn't flow as fast as we want. There's a certain time period that goes along with submitting these applications. It could begin before, oh, that happened up there, before December 19th. It might be in the next week, so we want to make sure that we're on time for that. These grant fundings are highly competitive as well, so the earlier you get it in, the most likely you are to get that money as well. Okay, our application is for the city of American Canyon, it's in its third draft right now. We're going to probably put that to aside as we go to collaborate with Napa County, which hopefully will be sometime in the next couple of weeks. Working with the Coastal Quest Consultants, I've been doing that for over the last month or so to work on the various drafts of this application that go forward. As Brent had in his slides earlier, it's A through G, the number of elements you have to compete. And you have a huge outreach and a consultant aspect to these applications, so you have to spell all that out. The terms of which you have to ask for is in hundreds of thousands of dollars. Currently, ours is above or almost at $600,000, which we'd be asking for. The initial application, all it does, sets us up for the efforts that will come later on. So, it being a 24-month application period, should we get awarded that money? It would come next year, so we'd actually have our application and our vulnerability assessment done by 2028, and then 2028, so somewhere around there, 2029. So Brent, we had to actually feel what it's like to be early, but because we'd be seven years ahead with our application. There would be future costs that would go along with implementation, but we would satisfy the regulatory, as the Senate bill that they're asking for. But the additional efforts in regards to the construction costs, that would be something else. That would then be another problem, how will we actually address the, actually know how to address it, but the funding for those efforts would be the next that we'd have to take. Fair to say that if you're the first one to get the adopted plan, that you'd be also in line for grant funding to fill that up?
Well, first in, it is, I think it's going to come down to costs. I know, Erica and I found out today initially, we thought that being alone would be good. But we've found out today, because we've been misinformed, that actually going with a group, that we'd have a better chance of doing it. So grouping with the county of Napa and with the city of Napa, those that we'd have a better chance. And we're pretty far down the road already with our application period. We just have to merge some of our scope of work together, and we should be able to submit an application, which I'm hopeful for before the end of October, because in November, the application period gets a little bit more competitive after then. So, the fact that we're early is very much assisting in terms of us being able to get those funds. And I think that happened. I believe, I believe that is it, unless we're going to have a lot of granular questions around here. I have answers if you have any, so.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Woods, for that presentation. That's helpful. Don't leave yet. And I know there's going to be questions. Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Goss?
Hey. Thank you. Yeah, that's really good to know. Glad the city's on it, trying to be early with all of this. So just to make sure I understand what you're saying. The grant that we're applying for is for state funds for this, right? It's through the state of California?
It's part of the O P C Devotion Protection Council, S B one grant program.
Okay.
Yeah, it ranges from, I think, $250,000 to $830,000. To be able to get this first piece towards, so it would satisfy the legislation that was passed, which is S B two seventy-two.
Sure. It's a lot of numbers. It doesn't...
It would satisfy that Senate bill, therefore we'd be in compliance with that law that was passed.
Okay. And it sounds like some, there have been some recent changes in the approach, very recent.
As recent as today, yes. Erica and I were on the news that it's a more information given. But this is good news. It's not bad news.
Yeah.
Since we're already down the road, it's a pivot that we're able to make relatively easily.
Great. Yeah, and it sounds like, so the strategy right now is to apply with the county and city of Napa. And, but if that timeline doesn't work for whatever reason, American Canyon is ready to go alone if need be.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Goss. Commissioner Avalon?
Hi, Dar. I just, I have a simple question for you. First, I want to compliment you. This is fabulous. I love how we are planning ahead, and how that was emphasized multiple times that we're planning ahead. How's Napa doing? Are they going to be able to, like, keep up with us? Because we thought we were getting ready to rock and roll and submit and get that S B one application in. So, my question is, is, I guess, one of collaboration, right? Because we're, you know, our city benefits their city, and, you know, we're all in this together. So, I guess my question is one of collaboration. How are we, and can you still submit early, way early?
Yeah, I think we're in a good position. Erica's a big part of this process, too, as well, so she's been assisting. So, the fact that, it looks like Napa actually upped their game. Because I think at first, we were not overly, we were not overly, but now that they, it looked like they put their foot on the gas. And that collaboration is what we're actually looking for, and what we were very happy with. And that's what came out of today's meeting, it was like, Napa was like, hey, let's rock and roll. And when they kind of put that forward, that's where we went. Because as Brent said, the longer you wait on these funds, you know, the odds are there's going to be more competitiveness for it. And since we're so close to being able to submit, you know, we should be able to lend these funds in. We're excited about that.
Just a follow-up question on that, because that's one of my questions, is, we're talking about grouping the application with the city of Napa or the county of Napa for the funds. Is that...
The potential vote.
Both. And so, we're talking about grant-fund application, but what about the adaptation piece? Is that something we are beholden to if we go on as a group effort? Or do you have to also be holding to the adaptation portion as a group as well versus an individual jurisdiction?
I think part of what makes this work is our scope of work is so similar. And that, the discussions we had today, where those scope of works were similar, although the city of American Canyon, with the work that we've already done, or it's going to integrate those pieces into an overall package of scope of work. So, the city of American Canyon's interest regards to our particular shoreline and our particular interest will be looked at as part of that, too. So, we do have technical team that supports us on that to make sure those pieces are integrated together. So, yeah, the city of American Canyon will make sure, you know, that our interest is looked at.
Yeah, I think that's an important delineation to make sure that we're doing as a city, is that we have, I won't use the word unique, but I'll say distinct shoreline that's vastly different than Up Valley. And, you know, the work that's being done here by other foundations and other work that's collaborating with the city as well. I think it's important that we have our own identity when we're adopting the adaptation for this regulatory system. So, the grant funding, that's great. I just want to make sure that the city, we all know that we're distinct in our own right, so that's good to hear. Thank you. Commissioner Altman?
Thank you. So, the big question I've got, and I think Brent sort of was trying to allude to it. The grants at this point are for planning. But at some point, there's going to need to be work done, construction. What is the thoughts, plans, et cetera? And specifically, does being early for and getting a planning grant put us in pole position, as it were, for any future construction grants that may be forthcoming?
Erica's department, but I would tell you this, the Senate bills that are unfunded that get passed us are significant, because they are something that continuously keeps happening. And small agencies like us are saying, hey, you know, these are unfunded Senate bills. But the construction dollars themselves, but the public works, we're talking about that.
Another question, very easy, it's very, almost very easy. The answer to that question is, hopefully, we were told that this will be kind of the first draft of a permanent restoration plan, for example, of major A A bond funding. It set us in perfect position to now get an implementation grant to start the design permitting phases, which we have that going on this fall, which will hopefully put us on to the next stage of implementation. We were told in the original technical assistance, which was also a grant, that we're getting us free assistance to write an application for the sea level rise, is that this will get us the first tranche in line for the implementation of either individual projects or more. And back to the question you asked before about jurisdiction of, you know, our plan for our jurisdiction. I see this as a county by plan, similar to the Act of Trade Returnation Plan we just heard about, where each jurisdiction's going to have their own needs being met for their specific shoreline. So, and also distinction would be that the city of Napa is not required to do a plan only in the county of Napa and the city of American Canyon because of our unique differences. But it's recommended that the city of Napa join. But if we can bring free money, I see it, grant money, if we don't apply for it, someone else will. And if we get that, that is more forward, because it's not now unfunded, it's now funded, and we're being able to do our plan in advance to everyone else. So, any quick question?
Yes. Which loops in with what you were just mentioning. But, you know, as I look at shorelines in the area, you mentioned city of Napa doesn't. Is that because Napa really isn't bay-fronted? It is just river-fronted? And so, with that in mind, Solano County, our neighbors to the south and east, have bay-fronting. Have we explored, or is it worth exploring, anything in terms of working with them? Whether it be countywide, whether it be particularly city of Benicia, who has a decent government, unlike city of Vallejo, which is a nightmare? So, I mean, that's kind of my question, is any thoughts in terms of doing anything either now or down the road? I mean, because I don't know where they may be in terms of ready to move, and if we're ready to move, we do not want to delay. That's obvious. But I don't know what future opportunities, but it may make sense in terms of some of the work needed. It may be very similar.
So, to answer the first part, we did think about, if countywide didn't work, that perhaps it'd be a bridge with Vallejo, since we are such, we're neighbors. We are very neighborly in the bay sense, in the shoreline aspects. So, that was, in order, it has been discussed, you know, is there a regional aspect to this, if possible? Right now, we're initiating with the county, hopefully county-wide plan. But that's not the same, we can't partner with them in the future. There's also individual jurisdictional subregions, our easier to respond. Napa Sanitation is on the shoreline. They're a different entity. We have Napa-Valejo Waste Management Authority, who has a landfill that's not closed along our same jurisdiction. So, there's multiple tasks going on along the shoreline, as you know, that's all we need. But there's different partners all along the way.
Thank you. Got it. Thank you, Commissioner Altman. I have a few questions. Regarding the Senate bill, is B C D C the only governing body to provide guidelines for adaptation?
I know, I know that they're the most... I know they're the ones who've stepped forward to help with funding and technical expertise. I know that that's been very critical to getting this application to this point right here. So, if there are, they seem to have to step up, at least to the point to where they're assisting with technical expertise or with financial burden or pass forward, so there may be some of them.
Okay. And that's probably my question. Go ahead, Director Cooper, if you wanted to add to that.
I'll just add, the B C D C guidelines are really authorized by state law. And so, following their guidelines and ensuring our plan applies with that would be the path to get what may be in the future state funding for the big money to actually build things and adapt. But your point's well taken. There may be tools and tips and things that make its way into an adaptation plan that fulfills the guidelines, and that's, I think, the other point.
Well, no, actually, I'm leading to another question and a point, but thank you for that. The reason I'm asking is because, you know, I, we manage vineyards, and we have to deal with certifications for C C O F or for Demeter, and they're restrictive, let's say. And so, I just want to understand, whatever governing body that we decide to use as the guidelines isn't so restrictive in the process that it limits our ability to adapt, not just in adaptation for what's happening with the guidelines, but that we really fully understand the scope of by which we're being adhered to.
You just reminded me, as part of the application that Assistant Director Woods is putting together, the guidelines require is a technical advisory committee formed of not only our community, there's a community advisory committee, there will also be a technical committee required of our partners, Fish and Wildlife, Water Board, and I referred the acronym of it, which is all Bay Area regulatory agencies that all come together, including B C D C. So, there is a requirement as part of the planning process that we have this different community engagement advisory group, as well as the technical regulatory advisory group that has to meet to discuss these. Otherwise, it can't get built, right? We can't implement anything if we can't get parties to agree.
No, thank you. Again, I'm excited for this. I think, don't get me wrong, I think it's a great movement for the city, for the state, especially since we all... especially since we all live on the waterside. I just, you know, I've been in the business, my industry, long enough where we see that the adaptation of certain certifications becomes very restrictive and thus limiting to what you can and can't do going forward. And that also brings into what Commissioner Altman was saying about costs, right? If the limitations or restrictions are too prohibitive or too restrictive, then the cost can be much higher than we anticipate at the time. So, moving forward, I just want to make sure that we've exhausted or looked at any additional bodies that might provide guidelines that still allow us to apply for grants and still be in compliance for the adaptation of this policy. Thank you.
And Vice Chair, if I could add, the SB272 process does also involve the state-level Ocean Protection Council as an additional entity working with BCDC to put together the guidelines that we'll be working, planning up against and working with. The other thing I will note is SB272 also makes it clear that agencies that receive approval of their adaptation plan are first in line for available state grant funding. Now, the big point there is available state grants, obviously, but at least it puts us ahead of those who can't get their act together.
No, thank you for the clarification. Again, I just simply wanted to raise a point about where we're headed towards. Again, I think it's phenomenal, but I want to make sure that the guidelines that we're adopting are ones that are going to benefit us the most. Sure, Commissioner Goss?
Sorry, you've made me think of another question. So, I guess to, I know there are a lot of, a lot of state agencies that kind of all have slightly overlapping jurisdictions or overlapping perspectives, you know, they all each have their distinct purpose, but sometimes it gets a little blurry who's in charge of what, or more than one person's in charge of something. So, I guess my, to try and clarify my understanding, so BCDC, just for anyone who's not aware, is localized to the bay, but is a state agency in and of itself. So, they're providing these guidelines. And so, I guess, when you mention, like, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife or the state water board or regional water boards, that would be more in, like, a project approval sense, like permit approvals? Or would they play a more active role in kind of defining what they want the shoreline to look like or protections to look like?
In fact, to go back to the, the test, the restoration planning, we had an advisory commission that included Fish and Wildlife, and it didn't have the Fisheries or Regional Water Control Board in it per se, but they were included as part of it, the process, because the San Francisco Authority is that regulatory, right? That's the agency that oversees that grant program. But it was similar, because they're tied with the state water board. So, and the answer is, they're supposed to help us with the pitfalls, making sure we don't get in the territory we're talking about, like, whatever we're planning is something that can actually happen and be implemented without crazy mitigation requirements. As you know from your job, that you get hung up on regulatory requirements, but you have to do something, but it's going to be controversial because of all the impacts, the environment during the construction phase. So, that's where you have to bring in Brit, which is the Bay Area Regional Technical Group, and it's, that's just like that they're requiring this regulatory branch of the advisory group to make sure that we don't have any pitfalls and missteps in our planning processes. Because we have to come all together on this, right?
Right.
Impact everyone in the bay.
Right, yeah. No, thank you. It's, yeah, understanding how all of the different pieces come together can be a bit confusing, so I appreciate you clarifying that.
Commissioner, any other questions? Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment?
Is there anyone in the room? And we don't have anyone online.
Thank you again for that presentation, appreciate it. Well received.
Vice Chair, could you please close public comment?
I will now close public comment. Moving on to management and staff oral reports.
Well, thank you.
Director Cooper?
Vice Chair Plummer, since I'm here, I might as well just stay here and just give you a quick overview of some of the highlights happening in the creative development department. We are working very closely with the Richmond American Homes. They've purchased 33 of the 35 blocks of Canyon Estates. And just last week, we had a meeting between Richmond American and one of the two property owners, just to bring them up to speed, here's what's happening, here's what's going on, answer their questions. The other property owner has had prior conversations with Richmond American, so feel really good about being able to have those two individuals who own property there have a chance to really understand what Richmond American has in mind, kind of where we're going, and so, kind of making sure that nobody is left out and we're communicating. We have quite a few projects, you know, we had a burst of entitlements for the planning commission, you were working overtime the last couple of years, and a lot of those projects are now under construction. So, I won't go through all of them, but we've probably driven around town and seen them. They're all, they're all out there still doing construction. I can give you one bright spot, is the Home Suites Hotel has a new project manager. This person seems very diligent, we've had a meeting with them, they've kind of filled them in on the history, and this time they're uploading and paying attention to revisions that have been approved of their project. And so, they're, they really look like they're getting things organized, working better so they can finish off the project. So, and they've got some landscaping installed, so things are looking a little nicer as well on the property. So, really glad to see that, it's been a while and I think we're all very happy to see it finished.
Is there an estimated date at this point?
I am not able to provide one at this point. There were quite a few construction activities that didn't have benefit of permit that we need to make sure are addressed. And so, I'm not altogether sure, because between inspections, new things are found. So, we're really hoping that the labor ends and things can get cleaned up and organized and done. On some of the major city initiator projects coming up this fall, we'll be bringing to the city council an update to the California Building Code. This is done in the state of California every three years, and so, it's adopted statewide in the summer this year, and then it's up to each jurisdiction to adopt the state law. There are a few local amendments that the city typically adopts along with the, to modify the state law, state building code. There are new state laws now that limit further what cities can adopt as an amendment. So, American Canyon hasn't had a practice of doing much amendment to the code, so I don't think this, these changes are going to affect us, but it's states sort of clamping down further and further on local authority to regulate building codes. So, it's largely going to be a repeat of the state law, which we tend to do anyway. Anyway, that's coming up this fall, it's ordinance, so there'll be a first reading, the city council in beginning of, I believe, schedule has it in November, and then a second reading later in November, so that it can be in effect on January 1st, when it becomes effective statewide. Another initiative that we're really proud of is updating our software we use for building, code enforcement, planning. It's going to really enhance our customer experience, where you can log on and then see the status in real time of where your project is in the system and be able to communicate. We're going to be doing a multi-department, because Open Gov is also being implemented in other departments as well, for their respective services. We'll be doing a presentation at the city council in December, so you'll want to tune in for that, to give you a quick overview, kind of how it's working. But we plan to be doing a soft opening for building later on in perhaps late October or early November. And it is already in effect for code enforcement and planning applications. So, if anybody has an entitlement application, you can go on there and it's already laid out. And the same is true if you have a code compliance issue. I'm not encouraging people to file, but it is there for you if you do that. Also coming up in October, next month, is Citizens Academy, so really excited about that. I know many of you, many of you in the room, in the audience, are members and have graduated from Citizens Academy, and it's really great to be able to meet people and kind of spread the word about the peculiar things that we do. And so, we're looking forward to that. The October 15th is Community Development Day, so each group that is in the Citizens Academy gets to be in a different department each, about once a week or once a month, once a week or so. And so, our day is October 15th, so looking forward to that. And I think that's pretty much my update for you. Just one other item, as we all remember, the city council adopted the general plan in May, document itself was a red line, and there were a few comments. We are, we have modified to account for all of the red lines and things and kind of getting the document or camera ready, and so, we'll be bringing that to the council in some form to just sort of irrigate it. We have accommodated all of your comments and here are the red lines, and things all cleaned up into a nice document, so that we can proudly post it on our website and then soon amend it, as with, you might have with the active transportation plan and other exciting things that are in the works. So, that's my update for you tonight.
Thank you so much, Director Cooper, appreciate it. Commissioners, have any questions? Thank you, Director Cooper. Are there any commissioner items this evening? Okay, well, in that case, meeting is adjourned at 8:52 PM. Sorry, 7:52 PM, thank you.